So we're going to be calling the meeting to order. The village of Sayward respectfully acknowledges the land that we're gathered on, on the unceded traditional territory of the Comox First Nations, the traditional keepers of this land. So we'll call the meeting to order. Introduction of late items. None? Approval of agenda. Recommended resolution that the agenda for the committee of the whole meeting for council for the 25th of January 2022 be adopted. Do I have a motion, please?
Yeah.
Second.
I'll second that.
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Hearing none, motion carried. Minutes of previous meeting. None. Petition and delegations. None. Correspondence? None. Council reports? None. Boy, this is going really fast. Reports of committee? None. Mayor's report? None. Unfinished business? None. Okay, staff reports, financial plan? 2022 to 2026? I think we're going to do the resolution first for information and discussion, and then we'll get into it. Sound reasonable?
Yep.
That the committee of the whole receive the financial plan for the 2022-2026 report for information and discussion. Do I have a motion, please?
I'll move that.
Second?
Second.
That'd be great. Discussion?
Yes. We've got
All in favor?
Oh, all in favor of that, yeah.
Oh, yes.
All in favor, okay. Opposed? Hearing none? Motion carried. So we will turn it over to our CFO.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So to mayor and council. I just wanted to start out, basically, I guess, with a little disclaimer about this, the staff report and the financial plan. It's been a really, really busy first part of the year, and this is definitely just a very rough draft of the financial plan for 2022 to 2026. So I don't want anybody to get too hung up on any of the numbers right now. There's still a lot of work to be done on this plan. We did miss a committee of the whole meeting at the beginning of January, so at the bottom of the first page there of the staff report, I've just included the little timetable again in the schedule for the financial plan process. And just basically made some notes, you know, outlining what we finished, where we are. If you flip the page to the next page, we are having our first meeting tonight. There's going to be another committee of the whole meeting on February 8th, which was already scheduled. And I've added a third committee of the whole meeting for February 22nd, and that's basically to replace the one that we missed in January. So if that's something that council wants to discuss, maybe if that will work, that date, we can always change it to a different date. I don't know if council wanted to maybe quickly just discuss that now to see if that does work.
Counsel? You all good with February 22nd?
It works for me.
Yep, works for me.
Works for you?
Yeah.
Counselor Tinsley? Okay.
Yes.
Good to go for the 22nd then.
Okay, so that's good. So I wouldn't say we're kind of, we're behind with the plan. I think it's just, again, there's lots going on, and I wanted to bring something to council tonight just as a starting point. And, you know, we're all going to work together to get this plan ready to go and approved by the deadline of May 15th. So I'm just basically looking for a few things from council tonight. What I did is I went through the strategic plan and moved a bunch of things that are as part of that plan into the financial plan. And I think it's probably a good idea for council tonight to sort of go through the strategic plan again, make sure that I didn't miss miss anything in the financial plan. Maybe the first thing that we could start with is just right after that timetable is going through the numbered items there. So the first item is council travel, training, and education. I've put in a budget of $16,600 for 2022. Last year in 2021, that was about the same, the budget. It wasn't really used. I think about half of it was used, and that's, you know, to do with COVID and council doing a lot of virtual virtual training. There wasn't a lot of travel expenses. So going forward in 2022 and beyond, I know COVID restrictions are lifting. There may be some more in-person things happening this year. So maybe council would want to look at that, you know, have a discussion right now on if that's a good value for this year, or do you want to reduce it? Because there may not be as much travel again. I'm not really sure what council wants with that one. So if you maybe want to just quickly discuss that.
Well, if you turn to page five, on the top of page five, it shows the budget for 2021 and the budget for 2022 for council. Now, this year, in the fall, in September, we have the UBCM. So that's going to be necessary to stay. The AVICC is in April. So there's going to be, of course, costs there. The LGLA, I'm not sure about that one. Do you have any information on that one, see?
That was just for general or maybe even specific training through the LGLA, so I'm not sure what courses they're offering this year, but it was it was for counselors to sort of have a look at their programming and see if there was any courses that you wanted to take. I don't know if anyone's interested. It's something that you'd have to look into.
Okay, so for example, we have an election in October. Now, how soon will they be going for any training, any new counselors, if there is any, to go for training in November? Or December?
Yeah, I'd have to look into it. I'm not sure. So that's maybe something I can bring to the next committee of the whole meeting, maybe some information on what courses are available. They might have something in the fall, November, December, like you say, for new elected officials.
Okay, and that would adjust that budget as well. Do you, council, agree with that?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. My suggestion is that because nobody knows what's going on with COVID, things are looking good now, but might change. And also, I think even if it is all good and it's all over, it'll be at least a couple of months before things open up. I also think that the real world is going to continue with hybrid. There'll be these things in person, and there'll still be an opportunity for people to attend through streaming. So I would suggest that we can reduce the budget by 30% for this period. Three zero.
Okay.
That's my suggestion.
One of the things, for example, UBCM is booked for for us to go. And that looks like it's going to be a go. Is it where there's two seats booked for AVICC, right? Okay, two hotel rooms already?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, are they booked?
So is that is that one council member in the CAO or? Two council members?
That said we wanted to go.
I'm sorry?
That was you and I that said we wanted to go.
Correct. Okay. So yeah, let's, I'm okay with taking 30% off that. What do you think, Counselor Paulson?
I think that's reasonable. I know when I attended the UBCM last September, it was it was really interesting, even if it was virtual. I know it's so much better to make the connections and do the networking and everything in person, but the way they had it set up, it went really well. So you know, if we're looking at needing to reduce hotel rooms, it, or the cost of travel and that, there's there's, you know, looking at that, going attending virtually and going to some of the meetings when the workshops and meeting with the ministry and those kinds of things are happening, but I'm fine with 30% reduction.
Yeah, right now, if you did decide to cancel a room at the UBCM, there would be a loss associated with that because the room is already booked. Unless it's, unless there's COVID restrictions put in place at that time.
Okay.
So we'll run that one at 30% less.
I think the idea is what go ahead, yeah, and then, and then just the basic thing comes down by 30%, right?
Correct. So if we were $8,000 under from last year's budget, so $8,000 would be carried over, is that correct? Or where did that eight grand? Where does that go into reserve?
No, it just sort of gets, I guess it goes into surplus if there's a surplus at the end of the year, so there's no, there's no council training reserve or any carry forward. It's not if you had a carry forward for every single line item, it would be really hard to to track. So it just gets sucked into the rest of the financials. So as I mentioned, a lot of the items and projects from your 2022 strategic plan have been included into the the chart here that I've included in my report. Some of these items have been worked into the financial plan, some have not because I'm still working on year end. I'm still trying to figure out surpluses and reserves for 2021. The auditors arrive on February, I think Family Day is the 21st or 22nd, it's a Monday, so the Tuesday after Family Day is when the auditors arrive, and that's usually when I have a better picture of reserve surpluses going forward for 2022. So I will bring that to council at a future meeting.
So there's a going through second, Lisa? The auditors arrive so there is a cow meeting that that day? February 22nd?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so I should have that information at that meeting.
Okay, can I ask another question here? We have another cow scheduled for this on February 8th. So what new information will we have on the 8th, or do we wait till the 22nd?
There's a lot of information, so there's lots coming.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, there's projects that are coming up this year. There's things in the strategic plan that I have not figured out how much they're going to cost yet. I mean, if we slowly go through this, you'll see that a lot of them, you know, it says to be determined, so a water study, I don't know how much that's going to cost. So until I figure that out, I can't really put it into the financial plan.
Understood.
Yeah, wages and salaries, that hasn't been fully figured out yet. That's going to be brought to council as well. So there's, there is lots more to bring to you. It's just tonight was kind of a starting point to get thinking about it, looking at it, making sure that everything that you want included from the strategic plan, I've got down here in my report.
Okay.
So maybe we should just go through each section. I don't know if council's had a chance to go over the strategic plan again. So, community relations, there's three items in here that I pulled from the strategic plan. The first one is interpretive signage at the Comox First Nation Totem Pole and other key village locations. Anything that has a star beside it, I've put a little note at the end of the chart. It means it's taken from the 2022 strategic plan. So I put a budget in there of about $1,500, and the source of funds for that would just be operating. It wouldn't be coming from a reserve or a grant or anything like that. That's just coming from the operating budget.
Do you have a time on that?
The timeline for that was, we'd have to look at the strategic plan.
Signage to be installed summer of 2022?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So Lisa, I have a question about the signage there. Is that is that signage part of the working waterfront project? Is that where the working waterfront starts? And is there any funding for the working waterfront project? I know it was like a 10-year plan, but I've never seen the budget item for it. So is that done by grants each year or whenever it's being worked on?
I guess in short answer, yes, it would be grant funded because there's, I'd have to go back to the plan. There were several stages in that plan, and I think we've completed phase one. So if we move to phase two, you know, that's going to be a fairly large project that's going to have to be grant funded, so I can I mean, maybe council wants me to bring that, that plan back, back to you at some point at a meeting, so you can review it again and and see what, what was recommended to to do next.
I think it's going to be important to, if whatever is grant funded in terms of the waterfront project, we're going to have to make sure that it's pretty close to 100% grant because the monies that we're going to have to come up for on our 27% on the drainage plan is going to be fairly significant. So it would probably wouldn't be prudent on our part to spend the money on a waterfront project and not have the funds available for the drainage. So I think we're going to have to be very careful there. And I think we're going to need 100% grant to move forward on that at this time. Counsel? Any opinion?
I would agree. We've got, we've got some critical items that we have to make a priority over almost anything except the, almost everything except the the First Nations recognition stuff. We've got to get that going, too. That's a critical one, too.
I agree. Part of the OCP and reconciliation.
And I would, I would think that this signage under community relations could also fall under tourism, so it could be linked with the Tourism Committee and any possibility of getting grants for funding that way. So it doesn't necessarily need to be under this, this heading. It could look at funding from like the tourism sector, and there's, there is lots of money out there right now for revitalization and in tourism, millions of dollars. So
No, that's a good idea.
It's a, it's a possibility, too. So.
The signage designer the signage is the beginning and to Counselor Paulson's point, there's huge opportunities beyond that in terms of, I know one of the things that one of the band council or members at the meeting mentioned was about, you know, visual pictures of, of the history as well, you know, the fact that at the crossroads, it was all about all the logging and all that great stuff, but there's nothing about the First Nations, so there's lots of opportunities around that area as well.
Yeah, that's something we'd have to work with Gerald Wally on in terms of signage out in the, out in the valley. But Counselor Paulson brings up a good point. If this can be dropped under tourism and we can get grants for it to where we can put interpretive signage over in, for example, Kelly's Bridge, as well as at the Totem and at the entrance of the village, that would be, that would be fantastic.
Yeah.
Yes, exactly.
And the Tourism Committee sorry, the Tourism Committee is partially funded by the by the village with their yearly grant that they, that they give to them, so and I know that they're working on in other areas, too, for for getting grants, and signage is a big thing for the Tourism Committee.
Thank you, CFO.
Yep, thank you. I was also going to mention possibly collaborating with Comox First Nation itself. You know, there might be some sort of funding that they can offer as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good.
The next item is a legal agreement to clarify terms and communications around early start times of Western Forest products and measures in place to manage dust and noise. So that's just a token amount for legal costs. The actual crafting of the legal agreement would probably be something that the CAO would work on and then it would go to legal for review, so that, that's just a little token amount in there. I don't know if council you know, would want to put any more monies in there for possibly contract labor. I don't know if the new CAO would be comfortable drafting a legal agreement or has any experience with that. So that's, that's probably something to discuss, you know, once the new CAO is here and and figuring that one out. The next item is measures for cooling center in place, so that is to create a cooling center in the summertime here at the Kelsey Center, so it would be air conditioning. You know, the crazy heat wave last year, don't know if we're going to experience that again, hopefully not anytime soon, but with climate change, it's, it's probably inevitable that that's going to happen at some point. So that I've put in about $40,000, and that's based on a quote that we received, I believe in August or September of 2021. That number might change a little bit. Source of funds to be determined, so I have not figured out where that funding would come from. I am going to look into see if we can use the COVID-19 funds or community works funds for that project.
Sorry, can I just jump it? I would, I would think that the COVID fund would be would work for this because with, with an air conditioning unit or an exchange, air exchange unit, that's a health benefit. And that will also help deter the spread of COVID inside the building and as well as the offices down here. So if it's, if it's brought forth as a, as an air exchange as well, I think, I think we have a better shot at it. Any comments from council?
Yes, I would agree with that. It's, I believe it's also for reopening. Remember, they called it a reopening, what? Two waves back? So it's for general reopening as well. My only, my only quick question was around like we, a fair bit of it has gone to the lifts, I believe. So just wondering how much we have left, right?
Sorry, Counselor Tinsley, are you referring to the lift stations, the generators?
Yeah, weren't they, weren't they all paid for through that fund? No?
No, that was being funded from the sewer surplus, sewer reserve.
My mistake, my mistake. With, I withdraw that question.
We'll delete that from the video.
Okay. So I have a question about the measures for cooling center in place, and I was also wondering about the measures for a warming center like we needed in the wintertime. And I wonder if there's any funding available through the Shawn Koopman and the SRD, the Emergency Services funding, how that plays out with the cooling center or the or the warming center? Because I know Sean was sending out messages last summer, too, about the about the heat and needing cooling spaces.
Maybe, maybe I could speak to that as an emergency social services volunteer. My understanding is that, so if there is an emergency declared like, so, and then there is some funding that comes from the province through EMBC. So and that, you know, that would apply to both situations. So there is that funding there in terms of because it is emergency based, right? Emerg, I wouldn't think there'd be any ongoing like capital monies available from EMBC.
So this is more for infrastructure rather than ongoing funding for the the cooling place, cooling center.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I think we've got the heat covered, like we've got heat there and all that kind of stuff, so it's the cooling part that would, the money would need to be spent.
Yeah, and we also don't have any indication at this time. It looks like the REC Center Study has taken a backseat with the SRD. So I'm not sure when, if that's going to be completed in 2022 or not. So if it is going to be completed in 2022 in early spring, for example, then you know, it is something that was brought to my attention that we may wait on, but that would be based on what the SRD gets their stuff together for that study. Good for thought.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so moving on to economic development. So the first item is an updated development framework, including an updated zoning bylaw and building permit calculation process, access to additional staff resources to administer new building and development applications, so that essentially is to cover the increase in development here in Sayward, specifically down at the Wharf. There's going to be potentially in 2022, a lot of building permits coming into the office, a lot of extra work for staff. So this is to, you know, hire some contract labor, get some assistance possibly from the SRD, which we are charged for to sort of you know, have some assistance with, with the volume of work essentially. So I don't know if that's something that council wants to discuss. That was, I put in there $15,000, and that would just be coming from operating, so it's, again, it's not grant funded or anything like that. It's just an operating cost that the village would have to cover.
Counsel? Any thoughts?
Would the would those increased building permits and would that money go towards covering the cost of the operating cost for this program? So
Sorry.
So if there's an, if you're, if we're expecting an increase in the number of applications for building permits and whatever the money that come, is generated from those building permits, then would that money go to, towards funding contracted service or hiring extra staff or I'm not sure how that works.
Yeah, no, I think, I think you're on the right track. Some of it definitely would go to cover that, but with the anticipated volume, you know, I, I think, I think there's definitely some extra cost there.
Okay. And I know sorry, Mark, go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead, Counselor Paulson.
Well, I know at some of the meetings that I was on, the monthly meetings that Minister Municipal Affairs had, they were specifically one meeting, they were talking about looking at ways to make building permits and, and inspectors and all of that easier access for people instead of making it such a long dragged out process. So there might be some option or opportunity for us to speak to her further about that. They were, they were even talking about dividing lots or dividing the ALR land into smaller parcels of lots so that there was more property available for sale. So that's something that, that we could look at, at UBCM, too, with discussing with her what, what actually have they put in place to increase the speed and the efficiency of, of people applying for building permits and getting inspectors out? Because that's, that's, that's a real big problem.
I'm not sure if $15,000 is high or
I think it's a reasonable figure based on, you know, we're speculating on the amount of increase, but I'd say we all agree there's, there's going to be some increase there, and I think it's a reasonable, fairly small number to leave in.
Okay. CFO?
Okay, so next item is progress made on the working waterfront project in accordance with part 3.4 of the OCP. So this one, part 3.4 in the draft OCP reads, encourage further development of the Kelsey Bay waterfront in alignment with the working waterfront project to create better access for residents and visitors. So that is probably going to be part of the information that I'll bring back to council to do with the working waterfront project, as mentioned at the beginning of this, this report. I can make a note here to, to bring that to the next committee of the whole meeting.
Okay, I have
Sorry, Counselor Paulson?
I have some information to add to that, too. I heard today that there's a job opportunity with the federal government for a research project and a survey to be done, and it's around derelict ships in the area. And it's around derelict ships in the area. So it it just, um, when I was reading this report last night, I thought, and then I heard this this today about this project that there that our M P is doing. I thought, well, that's really interesting. I wonder if there's something that we need to know about removal of those derelict ships or you know, what people think about them and you know, how much it'll cost and all of that. So there may be more
Would that be something that we'd have to work with W F P and Island Timber with because they have the forshore agreement there?
Yeah, I I believe so. Sorry, sorry.
Okay. I didn't realize that that because I I thought some of them were on Roger Pickett's land or water ten years.
There are some, there is on Roger Picketts, but it's also on W F P and Island Timber.
Okay.
Just to add, um, there's a point in, I believe it's the document we're reviewing here. I think it's at the very end where one of the things we're doing is is uh, going to sort out who who's 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 at risk for those ships, which includes ownership. So that's sort of the first step.
Yeah. Okay.
Agreed. Okay, CFO?
Okay, the next item, if we flip the page, is looking at infrastructure upgrades and asset replacement. So that has a few things in it from the strategic plan. The first item is a water master plan. And the next item is a sewage capacity study. So again, these are, these are straight from the strategic plan that council has already approved. I don't have a budget for those two items. I'm going to have to get some more information. I'm pretty sure we can use community works funds for any of these sorts of studies and plans. So so the funds would be the Community Works Fund Reserve. And my comment there is, yeah, I need to figure out, figure out some costs for for those studies. So that I will bring to a future, future meeting.
Okay.
Uh, the drainage project stage one. So this is the grant application that Urban Systems is working on for us. The deadline for application has been extended. I believe the new deadline is, oh, I don't quote me sometime in February. So there's a couple more weeks until the application is due. And I'm I am keeping in contact with Urban Systems there. They are working on it.
It hasn't been submitted yet.
Correct. Again, the breakdown of the funding, the Government of Canada will fund forty percent, the Province of B C will fund thirty three percent, and the village will have to fund twenty seven percent. So the the total project cost is about one point four million. And that would be a capital item. So capital, capital projects will be discussed in a a future meeting. Once I I've got some more information and once the grant app is actually submitted. We do need to, council does need to make a resolution at the next council meeting that the village is committed to contributing their portion of the costs. So I'll I'll have a a brief report on this at the next council meeting.
So that cost would be in around three hundred and fifty thousand, is that not?
I I think so. Um, I I did notice on my previous report, there was a bit of a typo and I had only calculated ninety percent of the project cost. So let me just calculate it here quickly, one, four, one, six.
Three hundred and eighty two thousand.
Times
Three hundred and twenty.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah. So it's a, it's, it's quite a bit of money. You know, where is that going to come from? Yet to be determined. There's going to be several options. We can look at reserves, we can borrow the money. Now, if we borrow the money, it, I believe it has to go to referendum, but that might be perfect timing with an election coming up. You could have that question on the ballot this year. Chances are this project wouldn't start in two thousand and twenty two anyways. Once the application is in, the it usually takes anywhere from three to six months to hear back from the funders. You know, that takes us into late summer. Then you've got to put out a tender. So chances are this isn't going to start till two thousand and twenty three and and you know, if you did want to go the route of borrowing the money, perfect opportunity this fall when you, when you go to, when people go to the polls and and they can answer that question about borrowing the money for this project.
So, sorry, is there not also an opportunity to speak to Minister Osborne on maybe other ways that we can get that twenty seven percent opposed to going to the taxpayer?
Yeah, I mean, definitely council is more than welcome to contact ministers and and reach out and try to find you know, additional funding somewhere. Yep, that's, that's
Okay, that'd be something that we'll get our new C A O on.
Well, it might be difficult when the province is committed to four hundred and sixty seven thousand of that of that total amount.
True, but to the province, that kind of money is a little bit more accessible than us coming up with just under four hundred thousand ourselves.
Yeah.
And Minister Osborne and and M L A Babchuk are are quite familiar with our financial situation here and have offered to give us support when necessary. So we might as well put it all of his branch out there and see what they have to say.
Yeah.
Never its task.
Never does. You don't get it.
I think before, yeah, before we go to increasing tax or anything else, we need to exhaust every other possibility to get that twenty seven percent. Instead of just saying we're going to tax it to twenty seven percent. I think we need to exhaust every other ability here.
Yeah, I agree.
Yep, if there's free money out there, we want it.
Absolutely.
So the next item on the list is the Newcastle Dam project, and that's just carry forward again. That's something that will come to council this year with an update. I don't have anything to update right now. So I I I don't have anything for you at this, at this time, but it's it's a carry forward. So there's no additional funding being put in the budget for this. It's just the funds have already been put aside. It's it's just the project is a bit stalled and it will be finished this year.
For sure, correct?
Yes, for sure. Uh, next item is short and long term projects for the Kelsey Center. That's from your strategic plan. I would have to look. We did have some reports done on the Kelsey Center. There was an electrical report done and I believe a I can't remember what the other report was was, but there there were some recommendations in there on some safety upgrades for the Kelsey Center. So I will bring that to council at a future meeting as well. Budget for that to be determined. I I'd have to review all that information and bring that back to you. And so source of funds to be determined as well. Once I know how much that that is going to cost, then I can bring some options to council. Uh, next item is replacing the volume pump on engine four. Then actually, the next three are all for the fire department and they're just carry forwards from two thousand and twenty one. And they're all coming from operating surplus.
And that's just our forty percent?
That would be
Or is that full cost?
No, that would be, that's the full cost. So yes, we would, village would not be responsible for that whole thing. Yes, correct.
Okay, so when we do this, would we just minus the forty percent, put the real number in?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The next section is living green. One of the items that council was still wanting is solar panels for the Kelsey Center. I thought at one point we had discussed solar panels for the water treatment plant, but this was, this is in your strategic plan. So if council still wants to go forward with these solar panels for the Kelsey Center, that that's, that's fine. There's a budget of ten thousand for that, and that's coming from the Climate Action Revenue Incentive Program Reserve. That program has been discontinued. We are no longer getting carbon tax every year to put into a reserve. I'm thinking that the province is coming up with a different program. I just haven't heard anything yet. There's about twenty one thousand dollars in that reserve. So I think council should look at spending that entire thing this year. Just in case the province, you know, claws it back or says, hey, the program has ended. Why haven't you spent the money? That kind of thing.
Well, I think solar panels are for the treatment center, treatment plant would be a good idea to help recruit, you know, reduce costs there. Counsel, what do you think?
Yeah, I would agree that the priority would be the treatment center.
Counselor Paulson?
The water treatment plant. Yeah. I think, I think the water the water plant is more urgent.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Opposed over the Kelsey Center. Okay.
Okay, so I can, I can just modify that. I can just put a little edit in the strategic plan and change it to the water treatment plant. That's, that's no problem. Uh, next item is water meter bylaw in place. I've put three thousand in there, just coming from operating funds and that mostly would be for legal to look at and sort of some token costs for getting that bylaw up and running in two thousand and twenty two. Yeah, it that that's just something, that's a little project to do this year is that water meter bylaw. This has nothing to do with actually installing the water meters. It would just be getting the bylaw in place for two thousand and twenty two and then moving into two thousand and twenty three would be looking at, okay, what's it going to cost to actually implement, implement water meters, who's paying for it? And bringing that information to council. Uh, next item is electric vehicle charging station installed. I I believe there was a grant for that at one point, but I'm not sure if the grant is still open. So I put in it to be determined for both budget and source of funds. That was in the strategic plan for two thousand and twenty two. I don't know where council would want the vehicle charging station. If you had any ideas on that.
Well, I'm thinking also this could be a tourism issue or go to the Tourism Committee as well to promote the fact that we do have electric charging uh, station here would be to attract more of our green tourism. Um, in terms of location, uh, that's a tricky one because how much land do we have? I mean, we have the campground. We have the I mean, where would you put it? Or on the parking lot here? Yeah?
Right by the recycling to encourage recycling while you're recharging.
There you go. Yeah, somewhere out there or maybe, yeah, yeah, somewhere out there would work. But I'd like to see whether or not we can get some grant money for that.
So so I'll I'll get some more information on that. I'll see if there's any grants available and and also find out you know, how much that project would cost. Next item is community garden revitalized. So this I put in five thousand coming from the care care preserve again, because it's green. We could, we could increase that to to maybe ten thousand because again, we've got twenty one thousand in our our reserve. Ten to twelve would probably be used for solar panels and, you know, maybe another five to seven for the community garden. I think that would be a great project to collaborate with volunteers, Sayward Future Society, and get that community garden revitalized and up and going again. So yeah, I don't know if council wanted to discuss that or had any comments.
Yeah, why would that cost five grand?
Well, I I put that in there because we have the money, right? It's in the reserve. It needs to be spent. So you could, you could make it a really, really big project and have that community garden. You know, new dirt brought in, new boxes brought in for planting, buy gardening supplies, buy utensils, tools. You know, you could really make it a big project.
And that money is earmarked specifically for that project and couldn't be used elsewhere?
The money is in the Climate Action Revenue Incentive Program Reserve. So it's basically for any types of projects that are considered green. So it could be, it could be used for something else if you didn't want
Solar panels.
Well, of course, you could, you could do sort of solar panels and spend, spend all the money on solar panels. But this wasn't your strategic plan to revitalize the community garden. You might want to put only a hundred dollars in there. That's totally up to council and that's something that I'd like you to discuss.
Go ahead, counsel.
I'd like you I I would just like to let you know that the the Strathcona food hub meetings that I've been attending since last February. It, the coordinator there has now formed a committee in in Sayward with Sayward volunteers. And that's one of the that's one of the things that they like to look at for food in the having enough food in the community. And they do have community gardens in Campbell River. And I I was just at the meeting yesterday where we were talking about um, a food hub of being, being set up in in Sayward and the community gardens came up again and there's interest in having there's funding available to have the community gardens revitalized like with with funding from the Strathcona. Uh, I can't remember what the whole name of it is, but it's the, it's the food hub that's out of the S R D through the healthy communities that the the branch of S R D. So there's a potential for getting funding for that too for the grants or for the for the gardens, getting grants through that. So you know
Could you, Counselor Paulson, get us more information on that?
Sure. Yeah, we're having, we're having another meeting. Well, there had every month. So yeah, I will.
Thank you.
So I think that's excellent.
Counselor Tinsley?
Oh, I, I think that's excellent information and you know, I think we're talking the same talk here. Revitalization of that includes some structural things, maybe in the dirt we talked about it. Uh, but it's also, um, you know, promotion of it for volunteers, promotion within the community. I can also see it. Like part of it is promotion, to use that word, of of people, more people growing their own food, whether they're doing it in the community garden or not. I can also see that when it becomes a bigger presence, that, you know, people who grow in their own gardens, who have excess amounts, might be able to bring that to the community garden where other people can pick them up there. So it's, it's, it's a lot bigger than just so many square feet of garden, so to speak, right?
Yeah. And it's handy for, I mean, the residents are just a stone, stone throw away from there for accessing it. So people with with kids or, you know, that that want to come down and and plant some things. It's great. It and that's all part of the Sayward community food hub that sharing of excess food and we talked about fruit trees and sharing of that and I I think hopefully it'll get get going in Sayward and it will, it will be a vital part of what the people can do for making sure there's enough food for everyone.
Yeah, exactly. So I I think the dollar figure is reasonable there. Yeah, sorry.
Uh, well, if we can get grants opposed to the five thousand dollars, I think we should be looking at that opposed to spending the five grand if we don't have to.
Oh, sure. But, you know, I think it's reasonable to leave that in the budget and and also look for grants, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, for me, I would, I would want to cut that down to two grand. And use some of that grant money.
Yeah, we have to spend the money though, so how much is in that full, full care up account, uh, reserve, Lisa?
I think there's about twenty one thousand.
Okay.
So once we get more information on what, for example, the solar panels can do and how much we need to make a difference, right? Because I mean, you don't want to you want to get some kind of return for your investment on it. So once we determine exactly what's needed, you know, for the treatment plant in terms of so solar panels, do I need another shed for battery storage and so on and so forth? You know, we may want to leave as much money in that car reserve account as we can. Because that will, that'll give us long term dividends back to the community, correct? So let's see what we can get for grants first. And try to, as I said, spend more money on the solar if we have to. But until we get the numbers, we're just guessing.
Yeah.
Well, so just to add to that, Mr. Mayor, I mean, we're guessing on a lot of this stuff, right? We're trying to so the grants can take a while, right? We we've got to kind of finalize this by, when is it? By May, right?
May fifteenth.
I I think some of these grants aren't even going to come in, even if we get them or aren't going to get it. You know what I mean? Like, I think we got to kind of pick a number here. If you want to go a little bit lower, I don't have a problem with it, but you know. If you want to go a little bit lower, I don't have a problem with it, but you know, I would say just take it down to 4,000 and, you know, move forward or something.
Counselor Paulson, you agree with four grand?
Uh, yeah, I do. Or, I mean, even if we leave it at 5,000, is there, um, is there a possibility of shifting it to another, um, care up related, um, project?
Yes.
Yeah.
No, so, so them are good regardless, right?
Yeah, let's just see what kind of information we get at, uh, our CFO will bring us later in terms of, um, the solar panels. And then we can see if we need to keep the five grand in there or drop it to four or what have you.
Yeah.
So that'll be to be determined.
Okay.
Okay, the next item is tourism development. So the first item in that category is upgraded signage, cleaning and painting village buildings and structures and enhancing the village gardens. And that includes a ORV sign.
And that is.
Road vehicle signage, which was, I believe, supposed to be done a few years ago, never got done. So, um, I've put 10,000 in there. That would include, um, trail signage, um, fixing up the gardens, continuing to do that. Um, painting some village buildings, possibly power washing a few of them. I think the Kelsey Center and the fire hall need power washing, maybe painting. So there's 10,000 in there for, for those projects.
Um, I hate to say it, but for, to me, I don't know if the 10 grand would be better off in using that in part of our 27% opposed to painting buildings and so on and so forth for another 10 grand. I don't believe the painting of the buildings and that is really a priority for 2022 where the drainage plan is. So every nickel and dime that we can pull from other places really helps on our 27%. That's my thought. Council? Counselor Tinsley?
Uh, so I, yeah, I, I think it's, it's a good point. I think we have to be reasonable. You know, around, we do need to move forward on these things, um. You know, part of it's the image of the community, you know, oh, you know, we've got great, we've got great drains now, but you know, our buildings look like we're in a ghetto, right? So we got, we gotta, we gotta balance some of these things. This is pretty small money here. If you want to take it down a bit, sure, 7,500. But, you know, otherwise, uh, you know, I think we have to keep some of these things moving forward and still the, the drainage thing is going to be a big number regardless, right?
True. I think every dime going towards it. I'm okay with 10 grand or five, dropping that down to five grand. And then picking priority buildings that you say that maybe look a little rougher than others, opposed to spending the full 10 grand at this point. Because as I said, you take five from here, 10 from here, 20 from there, that really adds up.
Oh, no, for sure. Yeah. I mean, I, I don't have any problem if you want to take it down to five. I can do a lot of painting for, and power washing for that. And some signage.
Counselor Paulson?
Yeah. Well, and the signage too, I think is going to be part of the tourism committees, um, focus this, this summer. Um, and that's part, that's all part of the revitalization because trails are so poorly marked and, um, just, um, upgrading signage throughout the village and valley, um, is is going to benefit everybody. So.
Great. So you agree that we can take that down to 5,000?
Hmm. I, I would rather see leave it at 10,000 and if there's later, when we fa- find out what, uh, what the commute, uh, tourism committee is able to garner in, in grants and things and exactly what they can cover. But I, I certainly do agree that, um, the, the two buildings, the, the fire hall and the, um, ambulance station definitely need to be at least power washed and cleaned and, um, this year because they, they do look, uh, they look pretty, pretty bad.
I can't see why the fire department can't do that on their own with a couple of pressure washers. I mean, they painted their building hall two a few years back. There shouldn't be no reason why they shouldn't be able to clean the building either. But the, here's, here's my concern. If, if we don't get um, anything back from tourism before May 15th and we're keeping this at 10,000, correct me if I'm wrong, CFO, then taxes have to be adjusted or increased to what our budget, our total budget is. Is that not correct? Correct. So if we don't get word back from some of these people, we're going to be increasing our budget to meet or pardon me, taxes to meet the budget line on what we need for that year. So I think we have to be careful there. We have to recognize that that is going to increase taxes. So where we can drop it now would be beneficial, Council Tinsley?
I would like to, let's make a deal and let's go 7,500. Halfway between you two.
Okay.
Then you're happy, she's happy, I'm happy.
And we can, we can always look at this late, like February.
Okay, we'll drop it to 75.
Okay.
Okay, next item is create and staff public works on call backup position. So that is something that the prior CAO, I believe, had brought to council. Um, this is to cover our public work staff who are uh, generally overworked, uh, working way too much overtime and are on call 24/7. So I put in a budget just for now of 30,000. I'm hoping the new CAO can sort of work on this project. It was a handover item from the previous CAO and that can be brought to council at a future meeting.
Okay.
Risk management strategy. I've got 15,000 in there and I'm fairly certain that that can be funded from the Community Works Fund Reserve. Usually, like I said before, most, most of these studies and, and things are, are able to be funded from that reserve. So I'll get more info on that as well.
So that could be removed from our budget.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's put in the budget, but the source of funds is a reserve. So it's not just operating from taxation. Yeah.
Okay.
Correct. So that's, um, everything from the strategic plan. Uh, again, I should probably ask council, is there, is there anything that I've missed from the strategic plan that I haven't put in here?
Council?
I haven't, I haven't noticed anything.
Counselor Tinsley?
I haven't noticed any.
Okay. Thank you. Um, on page seven, we have revenue items. Can you explain the percent increased for me, please? 2.53, 3.55, 7, 10, 15?
Yep. So that's the, yeah, Mr. Mayor, that's the next section. So number three is tax increases and user fee increases. So water sewer, solid waste. Those have yet to be determined and put into the budget. And that's going to be discussed in detail at the next committee of the whole meeting. So what, what I've done is I've just created a, a quick little chart here outlining the effects of various percentage increases, tax increases for council's perusal. So that, that first little chart is showing your revenue items. So your municipal tax revenue, your water user fees, your sewer user fees and your solid waste user fees. And the next column over is what your 2021 revenue was for each of those items. So you can see for, uh, municipal taxes, you had about 350,000 come in for 2021. Water was about 135,000, sewer was 72, solid waste was 40,000. And, and what I've done is I've just done some quick calculations to show if council increases taxes by 2.5%. That, that's going to be your, your new revenue number. If you increase taxes by 3%, that next column is going to be your revenue item. So you can see it increases, obviously, as you increase your, your tax increase, your revenues will increase. But, but what I really wanted to, to do with this, uh, chart and, and really have council see is the, the next little chart down is your dollar increases. So a 2.5% increase in municipal taxes really only brings in an extra additional revenue of just over $8,700. So I, I think it's, it's, it's really important to stress to council that although you want to keep your taxes low and you don't want to, to increase them for your residents very much, this really, um, to me anyways, sort of brings to light that that sort of a strategy isn't sustainable. Um, because it's not bringing in, it's not bringing in very much revenue. You know, you're, you're looking at your, your budget items. You've got, you know, say $10,000 for, for, uh, wa- water study or, or all these things that we've just discussed that are coming out of operating funds. Where is that money coming from? Um, a- again, a 2.5% increase is only bringing you in $8,700 of extra revenue. So it's not even covering, uh, one of the items from your strategic plan. So I, I just thought giving that information in a chart, sort of a form would, would show council, um, you know, how much money, extra money is coming in with those percentage increases. And I also included a, a per household, chart there at the bottom. So two little charts showing your percentage increase for each household and what that would increase, uh, for dollars for each household. So 2.5% increase for each household is only about $33 in municipal taxes. If you increase your water user fees by 2.5%, you, you're only going to see an increase of about $10 for, for, for water on your tax bill. So I hope this chart makes sense. If you have any questions, definitely, definitely let me know. But it's, it's something for council to look at and, and, and really go through to, to see how those increases reflect in dollars.
It's, it's a real juggling act because when you look at the increased dollar per home, I mean, regardless when inflation costs have been driven so high now where so many people in our community are on fixed income, they're having difficulties actually keeping groceries on the table. So even to take when, if we increase the taxes, say 5%, when you take that extra, you know, over a hundred dollars away from them, it's, it's quite substantial when you're on that fixed income. So it is, it is a real juggling act. I mean, we have to be, I think, more creative now than we've ever had to be. That's my thought.
I would agree. We have to, we have to control the things we can control, but some of them are out of our control. Everyone's control, you know, whether they're on a fixed income or not. So, and we do have to fiscally, uh, you know, be prudent about, you know, the real world of what's going on currently inflation wise and, uh, worker availability and materials caught, you know, so it's, it's real world, right? So you're right. We've got to have a balance and, and control the things we can control, but recognize some of them that we can't. And the reality is the reality, right? So my thoughts.
So when, when I, when I look at the percentage increase of 7% for municipal taxes for the 2021 household, it's 1318. And if it's increased um, to 7%, it goes up to 1410. So that's less than a hundred dollars added on to your, your total taxes. And when you take that hundred dollars and divide it into 365 days, it's not, not really a lot. And, um, the, the, the value of houses is just going to continue going up. So I know there was a big uproar I heard in, in Campbell River when they were raising their, um, uh, municipal taxes by 7% for the year because, and we're, we're just outraged about it. But when you break it down into, and it's explained in the, in the dollar amount, I remember hearing Mayor Adams say it was like $89 um, difference going up, uh, 75 uh, to 7%. So if that, if that's explained to the people, I think, um, they can greater understand that. And um, we can't have improvements without having a, a decent track tax break, uh, tax rate that we can, um, do, do some of these things that are, are so badly needed.
But it's, it's also the water and sewer that goes up with that. So it's not just the hundred dollars. Right? And as, again, I mean, we're going to know more when stats can, comes out with the statistics on our population base. Um, but again, as I said, we just need to be uh, fiscally extremely responsible right now with inflation being as high as it is. And the cost that to people that are on fixed incomes, whether that be disability or, you know, candidate pension. That's, that's my point. Okay. Moving on.
Okay.
Okay, so moving on, um, what was the other thing I was going to say about that? Oh, uh, non-market change. Is everyone comfortable with that terminology and what that means? Non-market change when talking about the assessment role for 2022?
The assessments, um, on average went up 29% in Sayward.
Yes.
So how does that affect? Give me the breakdown on how that affects us again.
Um, so there's, um, two increases that happen to the assessment role. Uh, assessment changes due to market. So that is, uh, homes are valued at a higher, higher, uh, level. They're being sold for more money. So your assessment role goes up because it's based on sales. Uh, non-market change is your assessment role increases because of new construction. So non-market change is essentially new revenue because you have new homes, um, means new taxes, more taxes for the village. Um, in 2022, I believe the non-market change is almost a million dollars. It's a 900 and some odd thousand dollars. So what that translates to is about $5,000 in extra tax revenue. So you know, a- again, that's not very much. It's, it's, we're talking small dollars here. Um, and, and that may be something that council wants to look at in the future is really, really promoting, you know, new development in Sayward because any new development is going to bring extra taxes into the community for all of these projects that are in the financial plan.
Agreed.
Yeah. Um, so I just wanted to go over that quickly, non-market change. Um, it, it is going to increase because there are new homes being built here. There is the development at the Wharf that's on the plate. So, um, we will be seeing more non-market change in coming years. And I think that's a really good thing for, for the village because again, it, it means more tax revenue.
Thank you.
Um, item four is, I just made it four, five and six and seven, actually is just some, some notes on other items that I'm going to bring to council at future meetings. Uh, capital purchases, again, that includes buildings, vehicles, equipment, um, and huge, you know, large project items like the drainage plan. That's all going to be brought to council, uh, at the next meeting. And, uh, most budgets have been adjusted for operational cost increases such as utilities and known increases in revenues. Again, I'm, I'm adding things daily. So the, the plan is changing all the time. Uh, just based on additional information that I'm receiving and year end entries that are being done, et cetera. And the comparatives year over year on taxes and service fees will be included in a future financial plan report. And that's uh, essentially showing council, okay, what, what were the taxes on an average home last year? What do we anticipate the taxes to be, uh, on an average home in 2022 based on whatever tax uh, percentage increase rate council agrees on. Uh, again, I'll bring more information to council on that in the future. And salary and wage changes will also be included in a future meeting. So I think, I think that's kind of a good start for the financial plan. And if there's any other items that council wanted to discuss tonight or any, uh, follow-up items that you wanted me to look into, then definitely feel free to, you know, men- mention that tonight and I can bring it back to you at the next meeting.
Council? Counselor Paulson?
Could we just go back to, um, page seven and item number three there where it talks about, um, looking at, um, the cost and percentage increases and how many projects we're going to, uh, base on grant funding. And I just made a note here. I wonder if it would be, um, reasonable for council to enlist a grant writer, a person that's, um, uh, writing grants regularly and, um, uh, writing grants regularly and, um, applying for, um, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars on behalf of the village. And, uh, whether, whether that would, instead of taking the time of, of, of the staff for having to write these grants.
Sorry, let me, let me try that again. Um, Jason, our, our new CAO has shown me there's a company in Victoria that does grant writing opposed, um, I don't know if there's anything closer or not. Um, maybe, is it inappropriate to have, um, Jason comment on that? Jason, did you want to comment on that company?
I, I certainly can. I mean, I, I've looked into it, I just scratched, scratched the surface on it. But they've, uh, worked with a number of different communities and, and that's what they do. Uh, there's different levels of, of service where they'll actually flag you on available grants that are just released, uh, track that. And, uh, I, I, I would love to deep dive into that, um, larger because I, I, in a, in a bigger, a bigger way. Because, you know, that amount of money will, will definitely pay for itself. Um, if, uh, we're successful in getting somebody's grant. So, um, more, more to come on that as I, as I uncover that, uh, that potential.
Thank you.
Well, I just see that the, the cost of, um, having, um, up, what, what, what's that? That's doing the OCP? Um, and anyway, yeah, so we're paying them $8,000 to write a grant for, um, some funding. So if you're enlisting grant writers that are, that have got the connections and know the, uh, it might be, it might be more cost efficient than having the staff trying to gather all the information and, and write the grants. And, and, uh, I just, I just think it might be a, a, a good opportunity to to use money wisely.
I, I agree. I mean, I think one of the, I could be wrong, CFO could jump in on this. But I think, um, because of how busy this office has been, especially in the absence of a CAO, there could be grants that we have missed. Right? Where a grant company, even when we have our, our new CAO in place for the first year, I mean, everybody should be looking at that. But however, we don't want to miss any grant opportunities. We don't want to miss any opportunity to get free money.
Yeah.
So I think that's something we definitely need to look at and bring to, um, into the future, our next council meeting.
Yes, for sure. I would totally agree. It brings us back to the point in number three, uh, where the CFO makes the comment. It should be noted that the amount of projects and items listed in the strategic plan exceed available operating funds.
Correct.
That's, uh, the key to what we're talking about here.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Yeah.
On.
Okay.
That's it. Does, um, does anybody have any other questions? I, I gather, opposed to going line to line to the draft budget, uh, you're saying all these numbers are going to change or a lot of these numbers are going to change, correct?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I'd say a good portion of them are going to change. I, you know, it, it's always this joke with, um, with accountants is, is you never want to bring anything to anybody unless it's, it's in stone because people get focused on the numbers. Um, yeah, don't focus on those numbers too much right now. Um, yeah, they're going to change.
Okay, because I've got a lot of highlights here. Okay, so if the numbers are going to change, there's, there's really, um, no point on going line to line to the budget at this point. Do council agree?
I would agree with that.
I would agree.
Okay, well, I'll save my highlights for another time. Okay, well, thank you very much. Um, let's finish this up. Does anybody have any other comments? Counselor Poulsen?
I'd just like to say thank you very much, Lisa. I know you've been really busy and, um, a lot of hard work has gone into this and it's not over yet, but thanks very much for all you've done so far.
She had this together by noon. This was all together by noon, so I, I don't understand.
Yeah. What she did the rest of the day. No, it, you did a great job.
Yeah, it's very good. Thank you very much.
Yes, big shout out to, uh, to our staff, our CFO for putting all this together for us. Um, many more challenges to come. Hey, so in saying that, um, bylaws, we have none. New business, we have none. Public question period is the purpose of the question period is to enable citizens to ask questions to council about the issues that are important to the citizen asking the question. Speakers are limited to one question each. And if time permits, they're allowed to have an opportunity to ask a second question. Speaker may ask a second question, blah, blah, blah. Citizens may state their name and address. Um, we have somebody in the gallery, sort of, kind of. Does, um, Mr. Johnson have any questions for council?
Oh.
All I can see, all I can see is your eyes.
Oh, okay, sorry. Yes, no, no, no questions at this time. I'll, I'll have plenty by now at this time.
Okay, thank you. So 15 in camera, none. 16 is adjournment. Thank you very much, everybody, for taking their time out. I appreciate it.